Any questions, make any comments. I'm sure there'll be some folks that have some real interesting questions. That goes with the turf. I welcome challenges. I'm trying to be polite here. Challenges. That goes with the turf that I'm on. So Mayor, if you will.
Jim's right here.
He's the single caller, okay? That won't be anybody bad.
After the bleak outlook, I don't know if I'm gonna ask this question. But Congressman, first, I appreciate your service to the country as a representative. There's a group, a small group of federal employees that are forced to retire before they can receive Social Security. Air traffic controllers, DEA, FBI, Secret Service, Order Patrol, federal marshals, and your favorite, the Capitol Police. And you can explain how the Capitol Police, what they did to probably save your life and many others. Most of these people are military veterans that go into federal service to continue their careers in law enforcement. By law, they have to retire at age 56 before they're eligible for Social Security.
When do they get their retirement pay? Beginning at age 56?
At 56, that's right. Which is a portion under furs. It's a portion. But part of the retirement is Social Security also. And since they're forced to retire at age 56, they get a supplement until they reach that age. Air traffic controllers, you don't want them working when they're 60 years old. You don't want them. So this bill, I mean, the current proposal from the White House is to eliminate that surplus, the benefit they get to tie them over to the Social Security age. To eliminate that. You probably unknowingly voted on that last year, voted to eliminate that in the budget bill. What I'm looking for is a pledge from you that you will support these veterans that went into federal law enforcement, that you won't vote for any bill that cuts their pay, that supplement, to bridge them over to Social Security. We shouldn't have a Secret Service agent or Capitol Police that probably saved your life, that has to go get a second job or try to start another career after they ended at 56. So will you make that pledge to vote against any bill that contains that language?
I cannot.
You cannot.
Now, if it is an isolated bill, and I have a chance to look at it, I might can. By isolated bill, I'm talking about a bill that deals with that one subject matter and not everything, including motherhood, apple pie, and the kitchen sink. In Washington, we have a lot of damned if you do, damned if you don't circumstances in which there are things you hate in a bill and things you love in a bill. That is motivated in large part by special interest groups who know that their legislation, that they've put a lot of money into the political system to try to get passed, won't pass on its own merits if it's standing alone. And so they will slip that into this huge bill that covers everything, like these continuing resolutions, these omnibus bills. They cover all spending by the federal government that's discretionary, not the entitlements, not the debt service, but discretionary, which is about, gosh, I'm not really sure with the bill that passed two weeks ago, but it's normally in the neighborhood of 1.1, 1.4 trillion dollars a year. And so what I have to do is try to figure out, when I get put in that position, own balance, knowing that there's a lot of Republican stuff in the bill, but a lot of stuff I really love in a bill, how I'm gonna vote. And so I can't promise to you that I'm gonna vote against everything that is good if the only bad thing is what you just mentioned. If it's a standalone bill, then it's a little bit different where it's isolated and I can look at that particular thing. But you know, you're the first person ever broke this to me, and so I would have to look at the merits of America.
I broke this to you last fall with a no tap on.
Well, my memory is the same.
Your answer is the same.
Damned if you do, damned if you don't.
And you know, the people that bring the bills to the floor.
Which town hall was that?
Athens.
Athens, okay.
It's Paul Ryan. He brings you this lump bill. It's got 10,000 things in it.
You're talking about in the budget?
Yes.
The budget doesn't make any difference.
Well, the bill last year was H.R. 3345 that contained.
If it's continuing resolutions or omnibus bills, those are what count.
See, my point is, is that can't you go to Paul Ryan and say, hey, you've got these law enforcement officers that are gonna be penalized just because they chose to continue their career from the military into the Secret Service or the Capitol Police, and they're gonna be penalized because you're gonna try to take that money back? Can't you go to them and do that? Can't you go to the Appropriations Committee people and say, hey, I can't vote for this bill if you have this in there? We cannot hurt these, this little tiny group of people.
No, I can't honestly say that because of one issue, I'm gonna vote against a bill despite all the other good things that are in it.
So the point was that.
So I got to, I mean, if you're asking me to kill every single bill, let's say, let's say if it had, if it had $50 billion in additional national security spending that may or may not be necessary, okay? I'm gonna assume that that's good for the moment. And it's got this one thing related to the issue you just described. Would you want me to get all these folks in the Tennessee Valley who work on Resto Arsenal mad at me because of this one issue over here?
Well, we've talked about this before, and.
But I.
So you have one party that's putting together a bill that cuts people that shouldn't be cut so they can spend over here.
Well, let me ask you another, does everybody know this when they get hired into these jobs?
They do, they do.
So they, no, yes, they do. They say, hey. They say, hey, you have to retire at age 56, you're a Secret Service agent or a Capitol Police. And they knew that when they took the job.
And when you retire at 56, we give you a supplement to bridge you over to Social Security.
And they knew that when they took the job?
That's right.
So they could've gotten a different job if they wanted to.
Well, they're promised a bridge to Social Security. Now, what you voted on, and the President proposed, is to take that away for retirees. People that have kids going to college, and they got house plans, and they're already retired, 59 years old.
You know why I said that budget is relatively immaterial in this discussion? Because in Washington, the word budget does not mean the same thing that people around the rest of the world think the word budget means.
I've only got 15 seconds.
Let me finish. He's gonna cut me. I've got 15 seconds. I'm gonna make my point, and I'll give you an extra 15 seconds.
Thanks.
In Washington, the word budget, let's say if you're at the city, county, or state level, and you pass a budget, that means you're actually authorizing the expenditure money, right? Okay? That's what it means in every other government in the United States. In Washington, when you pass a budget, it doesn't authorize the spending of a penny. That's a huge difference. In Washington, it's kind of like a coach's playbook. It's the appropriation bills and the authorization bills that actually run the plays that are in the playbook that actually authorize the existence of programs or spend money. So I want to be real clear when I say that the budget really didn't make that much difference. And certainly what was spent two weeks ago by Washington was not in accord with any budget I wrote that passed. Okay, you have 15 seconds.
15 seconds. What we want in a legislature that represents us is people that go up and represent the people of our district, District 5. We don't want you to go give the vote card for District 5 to Paul Ryan and say, hey, well, that's what you presented us, this package. If I have to vote on it, there it is.
You can talk to Paul Ryan. I don't think you'll ever get him to say directly or indirectly that I've ever given my voting card to him on anything. That's not, and I don't, I don't give it to the President, I don't give it to the senators, I don't give it to any other House member. I do my best with my voting card of the very challenging bills that we face to vote what is in the best interest. But you make a good point with respect to, if there was a promise that you're going to get this supplement, and the people were employed and relied on that promise, then that's a legitimate argument. But I really need to see.
I'll forward it to you again. Just tell me who you want me to forward it to, and I'll send it to you again. That's just the basic.
What do you mean by if? Forward it? Is there a standalone bill?
What's that promise? That promise that says you're gonna work till 56 and you have to go because you're done. And we're gonna bridge you over until Social Security.
I don't doubt you on that.
Okay.
Next question. Do you have a question?
Sure. I appreciate you coming to be with us, and I appreciate the folks in your D.C. office, who I've had many conversations with. They are very professional, and I enjoy speaking with them, and I feel like that they have brought you many of my concerns. And I appreciate your presentation here and talking about how complicated the deficit and the debt is. And I agree with you that it is a serious issue. But I do disagree with you, at least historically, about where our priorities are. And I would just like to say that some of the conversations that I've heard from the speaker and others about reforming entitlements, given the fiscal constraints, made me deeply nervous. Are you for or against entitlement reform?
I know that's kind of broad.
It is.
It's a broad part.
So I, I want to be as sympathetic to the complicated nature of the fact that legislation is a moving target and has a whole lot of realities combined with it. The broad base facts is, I am deeply nervous that in order to keep military spending at present levels, that we will begin to pull away SNAP benefits, or Medicaid, or Medicare, or those kinds of long-term entitlement spending that.
Great question. Do you have a judgment as to what percentage of total federal government spending is national events?
About 20%.
That's less than that, but it's not far off. It's about 16 or 17, but with the bill that passed two weeks ago, the percentage may go up.
Correct.
So you're in the right ballpark.
I'm trying to be as fair and open-minded as possible. I still understand myself as something of a conservative, especially around fiscal issues. But I'm deeply concerned about what that has come to me. And while I recognize that what you're saying about the Hail Mary and the growth curve as a potential way out is only feasible. Most, many economists have suggested that the time to do this kind of spending bill was back in 2008, '09, '10. And at this, at this point, like, why did we cut the taxes at such a great rate when we need the revenue to offset our spending?
It's a Hail Mary pass. It's all based on a best-case scenario of economic growth that will end up generating more revenue even after our tax rates.
I hear the argument, and I am sympathetic with it to a point, because you're right. Every tax is some kind of, has some kind of depressive effect, right? But it's also true that the New Deal guaranteed a life for citizens of this county with DEA. And without that spending, we wouldn't be here.
Well, let me give you something to chew on, okay? And I respect your comments. Two parts. First part, if you're concerned about entitlement reform that results in cuts in spending, don't worry about it because it ain't gonna happen. What you're looking at, in my judgment right now, is a Republican effort to give the appearance of being financially responsible, knowing full well that what they're gonna do isn't gonna pass. Okay?
Okay.
That's the first comment. It's PR to try to offset what I call the debt junkie bill of two weeks ago. That is something you could control with it being discretionary spending. There are basically three, maybe four, times of spending by the federal government. First, you've got debt and debt service. Debt is the number-one priority. It has to be paid because the Constitution says so. That trumps everything else, okay? It has to be paid unless you change the Constitution. The second set of spending, and you can break it into two parts if you wish, are entitlement programs. Those are statutory. One is Social Security and Medicare, which are earned entitlements because you paid into them with the promise being that you're gonna get something back for what you paid in. Okay? That has to be paid according to federal statutes. Similar to that are 87 wealth transfer programs. People often call them welfare, but that's probably too broad of a term for everything that people want to encompass under that word. But you can call them wealth transfer programs, basically where people don't work for it, but they get it. And there are about 87 of those that cost $800 billion a year. Once you get through with those three sets of things that have to be paid because of federal statutes or the Constitution, then you get to the discretionary budget, which is around 1.2 to 1.4 trillion, depending on what this bill does from two weeks ago. If you have a trillion-dollar deficit, holy cow, what happens if our creditors tomorrow decide they just don't want to loan us more money? Not that they won't back the money that they've already loaned us, they just don't feel secure about loaning us more. That means you've got a trillion-dollar hole. That's where you have to have the 50, 60, whatever percent increase in income tax rates, or you have to have two-thirds cuts in all discretionary. Or, I mean, if you don't have the money, you don't have the money. Okay? And so we're in a tricky situation.
We have options to print, and like, it's.
You can hyperinflate, which means that you decrease the wealth of all Americans because the dollar is now worthless in terms of purchasing power. So there's no easy out, there's no easy button you can push. Everything's bad.
Correct, but it's not a zero-sum game in that regard. Like, we, like, sovereign government has more options than I do as crisis.
That is correct, and that's something I mentioned, I think, in my remarks on Chief Minister.
I agree, and like, some of those things might make you more nervous than they might make me.
But there is, there is no free lunch, there is no free ride. Basically, all Americans pay. Now, you've got a problem with hyperinflation because a lot of these entitlement programs are pegged to cost-of-living indexes. And so you might think you can hyperinflate your way out of the problem, but at the same time, you are increasing your statutory obligations. And then you've got the debt that you do have, the interest rates on the Treasury bills are gonna go up as you hyperinflate because creditors don't like getting paid back with money that's not worth as much.
I recognize the Chicago School of Economics.
It's all bad.
That's not like that principle.
Okay, go ahead.
But Friedman and others are, would argue slightly differently.
So what do you suggest is the answer?
I don't know.
Okay?
And I would, I mean, I want to be very honest about that. But I am deeply concerned that the Republican leadership has left any kind of sense of responsible fiscal spending completely behind them.
I agree with you. It's very depressing.
I mean, I grew up and watched my buddies come back from the Iraq War, and I've seen very little substantial policy output in the recognition of their sacrifice, where these are my friends and family that are mentally and physically destroyed by that war. And the billions of dollars that we've spent to guarantee very little clear policy output. And then in 2008, I watched my family's wealth that had been, you know, the thing that we were supposed to do just evaporate overnight, right? So these are two catastrophic failures from the elite leadership of both Republicans and the Democrats, where the bankers are not all responsible, but like, and it leaves us with this deficit that my generation needs to pay and sort out.
Well, I suspect that we're gonna go through this much quicker than just your generation suffering.
But you take my point.
I suspect, actually, looking around, that most everybody in this room will be alive when we go and solve it.
Another question.
But I, please, if anyone has suggestions of how you want me to try to fix it, given the three options I've proposed, you know, that I'm aware of, and if you have any others, or if you've got some money treat, well, better not be cash, but needs to be more like gold, you know, something tangible, let me know. But it's been, gosh, awful mess that our country has put itself into over the last three or four decades. You know, Ronald Reagan in 1982 had a big spat with Tip O'Neill, and that's when the deficit in 1982 broke the trillion-dollar mark. Gosh, I wish we only had a trillion-dollar deficit now. Excuse me, debt. Deficit is annual, debt is cumulative.
Dr. Good.
Yes, sir.
I'll change the subject. I don't expect to be alive when we, when we run out of money, but.
You'd be surprised when some of the estimates are for us going.
The subject, I want to say something about briefly is the hot topic currently, mental health, shootings in school. The thing that I feel that Congress needs to consider is legislation that would make it much simpler to institutionalize all of the seriously mentally ill people. Get them off the streets, out of jails, reopen the asylum. Civil Rights Act of the early '60s emptied the mental institutions, all of them. And now these people are on the streets. They can't function. They steal, they wind up in jail, they serve their terms, they're back on the street. They couldn't be cared for properly, and they will run a stop. I have an article here, I'll leave with you, the reason to pleasure, came out of your own American Medical Association a couple of years ago, basically articulating this subject much better than I have or I can't. But I would like for you to look at it and consider the possibility that some of the civil rights legislation needs to be altered to make it much simpler to involuntary commitment.
I'm gonna expound on that a little bit. I would submit to you that an even bigger player in this game has been the United States Supreme Court. You've got a constitutional requirement that no one can be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The confinement of a person against his will is a loss of liberty. And the Supreme Court and federal judges have basically said that you cannot confine somebody if they're mentally ill. There has to be more than that. There has to be evidence of them being a danger to themselves or to others. And of course, that means they've probably already done something to themselves or to others before you can confine them. And that, that is a big hurdle to overcome. Now, second, we've gotta quit looking at the federal government as the cure-all for all of our ailments. To me, the best government is local government, the closer it is to be. And I'm also a firm believer in the Tenth Amendment, federalism. And given that every single state in the Union is in a financial better position than the federal government, we have to have the citizenry start looking at their cities, counties, and state governments for the money that is necessary to pay for the things that you suggest that we ought to pay for with respect to mental health. The further you take it away from the people, it's gonna be less efficient. And we've done that in so many different fields and spent so much money on things that used to be city, county, and state responsibilities that your United States is headed towards in its bankruptcy and bankruptcy with devastating effects, and we need to avoid that. So I would hope that you'd be talking to your city, county, and state, particularly legislative officials, since they, you know, there is a Alabama Department of Mental Health, and that they would start picking up that load as the citizenry wishes, more so than the federal government. But if there's something I can do at the federal level, to the extent there are federal statutes that inhibit the ability of states in respect of what you said, then I'm more than happy to look at it. I'm not familiar with something in the 1960s Civil Rights Act, in particular, inhibiting the ability of states to confine those people who are mentally ill. I am familiar, well, I am familiar, I am familiar with the United States Supreme Court decisions that have made it much more difficult.
They were based on, on the White's legislation.
Well, my understanding of them is that they were based on due process of law and protection of life, liberty, and property in the Constitution. That's my recollection.
We'll go to a, we have.
But that's a good point.
Recollections.
If you've got a specific language in a civil rights statute you want me to look at, I'm more than happy to look at, that you would pinpoint as the reason why we have this problem as opposed to.
Well, we are, we can't solve this. Here, I will leave this.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
It's, it's very clear.
They all can see how, as a congressman, we get flooded with all these issues. Folks, we need to get more power back to the cities, counties, and states because we're so thinned out with all the things that we've decided we're gonna poke our nose into. We don't have the mental ability to be experts in everything we should be experts in. Okay? We don't. The mental capacity is not there. We need to focus on what's supposed to be the responsibility of the federal government. And the way to do that is to kick back to the cities, counties, and states their rights and their obligations without so much interference from Washington, D.C. Yes, sir.
Hi. Jenny Carter, Democrat. Back May 1st, 2017, you met with Jake Tapper?
Well, I don't think I have ever met with Jake Tapper, but I have been on his TV show.
Oh, you didn't have an interview with Jake Tapper?
Yes, I've been on his TV show.
To do with healthcare. Your quote was, "It will allow insurance companies to require people who have higher healthcare costs to contribute more to the insurance pool that helps offset these costs, thereby reducing the cost to those people who lead good lives." They're healthy. They've done the things to keep their bodies healthy. And right now, those are people who have done things the right way and that are seeing their costs skyrocketing. Now, I'm assuming you're frame clear of your prostate cancer?
I hope so.
Okay.
That's what the doctor says.
What did you do wrong to develop prostate cancer?
Well, that, you're taking that quote entirely out of context and distorting it.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
All right? Please have a seat, and I'll let you get back out on top.
I have one more question.
And I'm gonna wait it. No, no, no. I'm gonna talk about that quote, assuming that it's accurate, and I'm doubtful that it is verbatim.
I have one more question.
I'll let you finish up, and I'll let you have more time. But let me, we're on this part now, and I'll let you hit on whatever you wanna hit on and follow up on whatever I say you disagree with.
I'm hitting on it. I've got one more question.
All right, well, I'll try to segregate, remember that question and now a second question, but I may forget.
I'll go back to the first one. Should your goal level of Obamacare change, and should you receive less federal subsidies that cover 72% of the cost of your premiums? In other words, we basically pay your healthcare costs.
Let me get to the first question, and then we can talk about the second question.
What have you done wrong?
Let me, well, okay, what you're saying is what I call fake news, and is distorting it, and it's not true.
No, these words came out of your mouth.
No, no, you have distorted what I have said, and let me have a seat now, and I will say what I'm gonna say.
I'll have a seat when I'm ready to have a seat.
Okay, well, then stand up and just be quiet so I can say my comments. That's why this, okay, good. This is a statistical fact that the Democrats have distorted in an ugly way for political advantage. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the actual quote, what I was talking about is people who live good, healthy lives, people who follow their doctor's instructions, people who don't smoke, people who get exercise and are not obese, people who are not addicted to narcotics, people that eat the right kind of foods that the doctor wants you to eat, they pay less for healthcare because they get sick less often. That doesn't mean that 100% of them never get sick. It means that they get sick less often because they're leading the kind of lives that their doctors want them to lead, they're following the advice of their doctors, and as a consequence, they're healthier than they otherwise would be, which means their healthcare costs are lower. It's about like, who goes to, who pays more for milk? People who go to Walmart and buy milk, or people who don't go to Walmart and don't buy milk? Who pays more for milk? The people who buy it. The same thing for healthcare. If you've got people who are leading good, healthy lives and doing the right thing, then they get sick less often, so since they get sick less often, they have to pay less for healthcare. Now, that is a fact in anybody's book, okay? That's not an opinion. And you look at actuarial tables that insurance companies look at, and they will confirm that. So what this lady is doing is relying on false information and distorting it as the Democrats have been wont to do in this healthcare debate. And it gets me angry when you and other people like you intentionally try to deceive the public on this issue.
And it gets me.
Do you agree that people who are healthier because they've done the things that doctors recommend do, they get healthier?
So what did you do wrong? My first question was, what did you do wrong?
It's a statistical problem.
Just develop prostate cancer.
It's not everything.
And how dare you.
Some people, some people lead the kind of lives that doctors recommend they lead, and they still get sick.
How dare you say that a person with diabetes has done something, and some of this is hereditary.
I have never said that. That's where you're lying again.
Is your charitaria?
I'm sorry, but I'm telling you that when you say that the words you just put into my mouth, you're lying. It's as simple as that.
How do you can't suffer?
It's as simple as that. I would be slandering people by distorting what they say.
A person does not ask for cancer.
Nobody said that. All right, now, the next question is dealt with the contribution that the federal government makes to employees. I don't know if y'all know this, but every single federal government employee who works full-time gets their insurance, health insurance, paid in part by their employer. full-time gets their insurance, health insurance, paid in part by their employer. It's the same thing that happens with most people in the private sector. Now, here's the interesting thing you may not know, and that is that senators and congressmen get the least amount of contribution to the cost of their health insurance than any other federal employee. The least. Not the most, as this lady would suggest.
Do you not have?
Okay? Let's just make sure everybody understands that it is the least.
Do you not have access to free healthcare?
No, I don't.
Through the Office of the Attending Physician in DC?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
No, ma'am. Nobody does.
You're the only one.
No, ma'am. You've got more false information, though. You have to pay.
This is off the government website.
I'm sorry. I have no idea where that information came from.
You have no idea.
But I know from personal experience that it is false.
Do you not have free medical outpatient care at military facilities in the DC area?
I have no knowledge of that because I've never used them, so I don't have personal information.
You do.
But I do know, I do know that to use the house physician.
And you're welcome.
You have to pay for it.
You're welcome.
You have to pay for it because they take it out of my paycheck.
You're welcome.
Okay? You, I'm sorry, it's false.
Got a different question over there, lady.
It is. Thank you, Congressman.
By the way, does anybody think that people who lead good lives and follow their doctor's orders should have to pay more for health insurance?
I could do a follow-on of that.
I'm watching. Are you going to go ahead?
National healthcare.
I could do a follow-on to this one.
National healthcare.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Congressman. Gary Moore.
By the way, who are you tape recording for?
Myself. I'm a local blogger. I tape record all the.
No, that's okay, I'm just curious.
No, no, this is important for you to know because what you said is very true. All government should begin locally, all politics begins locally. I video the local city council meetings, the county commission meetings, when I get TV ad video of those. You're here, sir, as our government representative. I appreciate you being here. I video you. Appreciate your input and your spiel on telling us about the deficit and our debt. Huge problems.
How come, how come the TV folks aren't recording all of this?
ArcLight.blogspot, ArcLight.blogspot in the borough is my blog, in the borough.
Okay, go ahead and your questions, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's what I wanted to ask you about. I know you're on Armed Forces Committee and you're also on the Cybersecurity Caucus, which I thought was rather interesting. So my question relates around cybersecurity. We've had a series of Russian cyber attacks. According to Dan Coats, the Director of National Intelligence, as a matter of fact, he said in Reuters just last week that we are still under attack. And he has a high concern regarding our upcoming elections. My question for you is, is what is Congress going to do to protect our election security and integrity of our election process? And I'm also curious about what your thoughts are, your personal thoughts as a Congressman, on what has occurred, what the CIA has said before Mr. Trump took office and the Director of National Security. Thank you, sir.
One of the problems I have with questions like one you just asked, which is similar to these others, is you touch on so many topics. So which one do you want me to focus on first?
Our election integrity. What is your thoughts on that? And then your personal thoughts.
In my judgment, when you go to the ballot box and you vote, oh, I've seen some theft, but never of votes, but I've never seen it involve a foreign agent, okay? The actual theft of votes. So by and large, although our voting machine system is not perfect, and I like Alabama's system where you have a paper trail, so you've got, you know, paper ballots that go through a computer, and if something goes wrong with the computer, you can always check to see if what the computer readout says is consistent with how people actually voted. So I'm not so much concerned about the vote that you cast being taken from you because of some kind of cyber attack. I think what the greater concern is, particularly with respect to Russia, is they are using the internet in order to try to influence the way people think so that they vote a certain way or don't vote a certain way, or they have animosity for someone or love for somebody, they really like them, okay? And the problem that we have is that we already have laws that say that's illegal, like Mueller's indictment of 13 Russians. How many of those do you think are going to get extradited back to the United States from America? Probably zero. So the question is, how do you stop it when you have an internet that is so open to everybody? You can start infringing on people's First Amendment freedom of speech rights, including Americans, but how do you know when you've got someone who's doing a blog under some kind of anonymous name that they're American or not? So it's illegal what the Russians did in the United States and America. We've got indictments, but we have no effective way to extradite them and get them here. Now, Congress has gone a step further. We have passed legislation that empowers the President to impose various kinds of monetary sanctions on Russia. But you need a President who's going to follow up on that and actually impose sanctions to make it so distasteful for Russia or its citizens to attack the thought processes in our election system. Thought processes, how people think. And this President to date has not shown a willingness to do that, but I think Congress has pretty much done what we need to do since it's already illegal. The question is, what else can we do? I'm open to suggestions. Does anyone else know what? Keep in mind, all Congress can do is pass laws, okay?
Go to the White House and tell Trump to enforce them. Just walk over there.
How about impeach Trump?
Well, that's the trick of it. He has not committed a high crime or misdemeanor under the Constitution, so I take my oath of office seriously.
Thank you, Congressman.
But was there another part of it that you?
Well, I was just curious about what you, I think you probably covered your personal thoughts on it.
And keep in mind what the Russians did.
Right, sir.
Is they helped Bernie Sanders against Hillary Clinton. They helped Trump against Hillary Clinton. They have hurt Trump. You know, on some days, they'd actually be sponsoring two different rallies in the same city where one is pro-Trump and the other's anti-Trump. In Florida, they spent money on Hillary Clinton look-alike going around in a makeshift jail cell, okay, and saying, this is, you know, you don't want to vote for Hillary Clinton because she's a criminal kind of thing. That's one of the things the Russians put out. But how, you know, none of the Americans, at least to date, according to, according to the indictment, none of the Americans who were participating in Bernie Sanders' campaign, Hillary Clinton's campaign, or Donald Trump's campaign, or any other campaign I'm aware of, knew that these were Russians. They masqueraded, perhaps with false identification, I don't know, as Americans. So, you know, I'm open to suggestions on what to do that we haven't already done because it is illegal now for the Russians to do.